Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 21st, 2019 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Devine, would you like to sing the National Anthem or lead us in the flag salute?
I think I'll just lead tonight, if that's okay.
Okay, flag salute it is.
Stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered this evening by Chaplain Al Garcelazo from Adventist Health Glendale.
I invite you to bow your heads with me. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight at the city council meeting, and just thank you for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy. We pray that you will continue to bless our city, including our mayor, city council members, city staff, and all of the residents of Glendale. May we, may our actions always reflect your love and your grace, and may we do the best we can to help those who need our help. Now be with us during this meeting, fill us with your spirit, and grant us your peace. We ask all this in your name, amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Mayor and council, the agenda for the May 21, 2019 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, May 16, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. At 3:00 is presentation and appointments. 3A is agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, May 28, 2019. And because May 27th is Memorial Day, while we will be dark, the regular Housing Authority and City Council meetings for May 28, 2019 have been canceled. We will be returning in June.
Thank you, the next item?
3B is a proclamation designating the week of May 19 through May 25, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you. Will those ready to receive the proclamation for emergency medical services please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. My name is Cody Smith, I'm the EMS Battalion Chief. We appreciate your support and acknowledgement of EMS Week, and if you don't mind, would I, can I introduce my staff and our crew members?
Of course you can.
So starting on the left, we have our new EMS coordinator, Captain Phil Ambrose, our AO coordinator, Lewis Man Harris, our business safety specialist assistant too, Yolanda Rodriguez, our ambulance operator, Ryan Williams, ambulance operator, Raul Salmeron, engineer Brendan Edwards, firefighter, paramedic Jeff Woods, firefighter, paramedic John Giovinini, and captain Jim Michael. These are the crews and our supporting staff that help deliver EMS to our community.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today on this special day commemorating Emergency Medical Services Week. And I have a proclamation which reads as follows: Whereas emergency medical services, EMS, is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS plays a critical role in public health outreach and injury prevention, and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community, and whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate, life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the members of EMS teams, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Aran Najarian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme "Beyond the Call." I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Councilman Carpetian, would you please do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Thank you, thank you for everything you do, we appreciate it.[883.54][883.54](APPLAUSE) Next item, please.
We see is a proclamation designating the month of May 2019 as National Stroke Awareness Month.
Thank you, and will those appearing for the Stroke Awareness Month please come forward and introduce yourselves, please?
My name is Michelle Joxson, and I'm the Stroke Program Manager over at Glendale Adventist.
My name is Mikhail Gregorian, I'm a medical director of neuro-interventional program at Adventist Health Glendale Comprehensive Stroke Center.
Thank you. This is Stroke Awareness Month, and I have a proclamation to read. Whereas more than 800,000 people will suffer a stroke this year alone in the United States, with estimates of the incidence increasing by 25% by the year 2030, affecting 4 million people. Stroke is the number one cause of adult long-term disability and the fifth-leading cause of death. With every 40 seconds, someone in the United States suffers from a stroke. And whereas B-E-F-A-S-T, be fast, warning signs of stroke include: B for balance loss, E for eyes or vision loss, F for face drooping, A for arm weakness, S for speech difficulty, and T, time to call 911, along with sudden numbness or weakness of the face, arm, or leg, especially on one side of the body, sudden confusion, trouble speaking or understanding, sudden trouble seeing in one or both eyes, sudden trouble walking, dizziness, loss of balance or coordination, and sudden severe headache with no known cause. And whereas one of the highest priorities of Los Angeles County is to reduce the mortality and disability from stroke and improve the health of the residents in the nation's largest county by increasing the awareness on the recognition and prevention of stroke. And whereas Adventist Health Glendale's Comprehensive Stroke Center serves as a leading resource in the county as a facility with the expertise in stroke care by ensuring that the residents are treated timely by exceptional emergency department physicians and registered nurses with the highest quality of care using state-of-the-art equipment and treatments by expert neurologists, interventionalists, and neurosurgeons, and patients are cared for by specially-trained neurocritical care intensivists and registered nurses in the neurocritical care unit and neurotelemetry department. And whereas Adventist Health Glendale Comprehensive Stroke Center will bring focus on the prevention of stroke and the identification of stroke symptoms during the month of May as Stroke Awareness Month. And now therefore, I, Aran Najarian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 2019 to be recognized as Stroke Awareness Month and urge all residents to share information about the benefits of knowing the symptoms of stroke and ensuring proper and timely treatment at a comprehensive stroke center. Stroke Awareness Month. Thank you, Mr. Zagajanian.
The only one who went through this. The most proper person to do it.
We gave you a break.
Hold your heart, hold your heart.
Mr. Mayor, I want to say a couple more.
I'm very sorry, may I have 30 seconds of your time?
Of course you can, please tell us about your program and what you do for us.
First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Vartan Carpetian for organizing this event and helping for us to be here. It's truly an honor, and it's truly an honor to share the stage with the true heroes who treat the stroke, because this is an EMS week, and I am absolutely honored to be here with these guys, because stroke care begins, and the success in stroke care begins with the tireless work of these guys. They are fantastic, and if it were up to me, every day would be an EMS day all around the year. But I want to say that there is nothing particularly fashionable or lucrative financially about treating stroke, and people who do this, do this out of service and commitment to their community, because there is nothing convenient about waking up at 3:00 a.m. and running to the hospital to do very time-sensitive treatments. It's sort of akin to the job of a firefighter, and we do this because we love our job immensely, and we believe in reducing disability to ability. So thank you very much for recognizing this. Adventist Health Glendale is truly a comprehensive stroke program where miracles in patient care happen, and I am hoping it will serve as a standard for a lot of other hospitals and a lot of other centers in the city to develop stroke care so that stroke drops from the leading cause of disability in the country to the last cause of disability in the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[1256.58][1256.58](APPLAUSE) Mr. Carpetian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Dr. Gregorian and his team for his commitment to healthcare, because that's what this is all about. As the doctor mentioned, financially, it's not, they don't look at your financials. When they bring you in, they don't look at your insurance, you have insurance, you don't have insurance, they will take you in no matter what. And when, we had our civic advisory board about a week ago, or two weeks ago, and they had a PowerPoint presentation, and when you look at the success cases, it was just unbelievable from a guy who couldn't speak, couldn't walk, couldn't do anything, couldn't move half his body, and going from there to, in a few short months, to a complete recovery was really encouraging to see, and it's really inspiring. And I want to thank you for the work that you do and continue, and I know they are in the process of coming up with different methods of curing this, this disease or illness, whatever you want to call it, this condition, medical condition, that is going to give people more chance to recover than ever before. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, 3D is appointment of board and commission members. This was nomination of Councilmember Zagajanian made on March 7, 2019, May 7, 2019. D1 is for the appointment of Edik Minasyan to the planning commission.
Mr. Zagajanian.
Mr. Minasyan has been board, a member for, what was, one of the commissions, I forgot, like 10 years ago, for four years.
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago?
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, however, he has been a commissioner before, and I think he will be a perfect man, because he is a real estate broker, worked in Glendale for 37 years. So I would suggest him for this position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Zagajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes, congratulations. Next item?
Next item is the consent items, including minutes for, a four on the agenda following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Would someone like to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Zagajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item?
Next item on the agenda is city council and staff comments.
Mr. Sinanian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items, and the first one is about a charrette workshop that's organized by the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and this workshop is meant to give the community the opportunity to familiarize itself and bring its own input into the replacement terminal that Burbank Airport is well into the process of making a reality. And the charrette will take place on May 29th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Community College J. Walter Smith Student Center located 1500 North Verdugo Road, Glendale, California, 91208. Mr. Clerk, do we have a little, oh, it's up there, all right, sorry, I was concentrating on my own. But I encourage everyone who's interested in the replacement terminal to be there, to find out about it, and help us design the 14-gate replacement passenger terminal, which I'm sure all of us are going to be very proud of and are going to utilize extensively when it's actually up and running. So once again, May 29th through, May 29th, 6:00 p.m. through 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Community College, and everyone's welcome. I have one more item, if I may, Mr. Mayor. And the second is a request that today we adjourn in the memory of Saro Gudakyan, also known as Saro Gumrizhi, who's a prominent Armenian writer and publicist who passed away unfortunately due to cancer, and just a few days ago, and today was the funeral. I want to read a few words about Saro Gudakyan. He was born in 1951 in the city of Gumri, a city, by the way, that which is renowned in Armenia for its contribution to the world of arts. He graduated from the Yakchecharan School in 1968 and attended university there starting in 1974. From '74 until 1998, he worked in various publications. He moved to Glendale in 1998. In 1999, he began publishing a monthly literary publication called Hamaynapatke, which in translation means panorama, which elucidated all the arts and poetic and literary developments. And he was a prominent, prominent member of the Armenian-American art scene. His house was a gathering place for all the poets and writers, and he was an active member of the Armenian-American Literary Union. He is survived by his three daughters and their families, and I will dearly miss Mr. Gudakyan and dearly miss his contribution to the art world and his friendship. So I would like...
I join.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Gudakyan.
Of course, please.
Yes, Mr. Gudakyan. I know Mr. Gudakyan for approximately 20 years. He has been in our studio, I interviewed him before. He was legendary writer and publisher, as has been said, a magazine, monthly magazine, Hamaynapatke, as has been mentioned here. He was a very nice, calm, and collected person. And, you know, to publish Armenian magazine is not going to bring you lots of money. You have to work hard and expect nothing, and that's what he was doing for years from the day he moved from Armenia to Glendale. So I joined my colleague to say my condolences to his wife and three daughters, and to all those who were his friends, and all those readers of that magazine which had such a respect for him. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments?
No.
Mr. Carpetian?
Yes, I just want to join my colleagues and share the same stories that I had with Mr. Gudakyan. He was a very professional person, he touched many lives through his art, basically, and my thoughts and prayers go to his family and loved ones, and my deepest condolences to his wife and his daughters.
Mr. Devine?
Okay. I had the pleasure, this is on a happier note, of attending the One Glendale Soccer Championships, and I think maybe we have a few photos, I'm not sure, but this is one of the best programs, I think, that we have in this city. We have over 300 kids that are involved, so Saturday, I intended on going for the beginning of the games and staying for maybe, you know, half a game or something, and I ended up watching two soccer matches that were absolutely fantastic. What ended up, Edison won the championship, they played Jefferson, and the consolation round went to R.D. White. White versus Mann. So, I just want to send out a thank you to all the parents that allow their kids to participate, to our Community Services and Parks Department who put this program on. I hear nothing but good things from parents and teachers and principals about how this changes these kids' lives, as far as life skills and classroom attitude and diet, nutrition, exercise. It's just such a fabulous program. So, congratulations to all those kids, that each one of them is a winner. Thank you. Those, that was, it was great. It was just a great, beautiful day. My second, I'd like to ask about the replacement of LED lamps in the city. I received an email, and I guess we were starting to, I guess, Mr. Zern, this is, going, this question goes to you. You know, we're all about energy efficiency, and I guess is the replacement of these LED light lamps have, has kind of slowed down or stopped? And I'm wondering where we are with that process and...
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Devine. Our process is to attempt to relamp as needed, so as one burns out with LED lights. And so, we've had some wholesale exchanges, foothills, and a good example of a business district or a major arterial that has it. What I indicated in the email to the individual who wrote, that you had gotten a copy of, is in some of the residential areas, we've had some pushback, quite frankly. The lights are very bright, so we've had light intrusion issues. We've had, in districts that have historic lighting, the poles, the lights, we've had a difficult time finding LED manufacturers who can match those. So, we've been working with the residents. It's not something that I wanted to foist on them without having the opportunity for them to have some input, and we can try to work through it, look for different combinations of lamps. So, what we're doing is buying two or three different kinds, we'll put them in a neighborhood, let the folks look at them for a while, and see how they feel about them, and then we'll eventually find one that we can get through there. The technology is advancing, but in some cases, it's a matter of folks who, I think, as I said in my note, feel it's a quality of life and a neighborhood aesthetic issue. And so, we're just trying to work with them. I haven't gone in and, as I said, just wholesale shoved, put the lights in and said tough. I've never done that in my career on anything I've ever done. So, even though there's a great benefit for the conservation of energy, it's something we're going to continue to work with, those areas that have some concerns.
When you say that they're, you're saying that they're too bright, as I understand it, they're, you can, they can be dimmed, computerized, or, what do I have here, remotely, dimmed, or you could put lamp shields around them, some sort of, I mean, if that's the complaint that we're getting, that they're too bright?
And ma'am, we've put a lot of light shields on. I don't know about remote dimming. Those are systems that maybe somebody has. We don't have those. You know, we're retrofitting existing lights to try to keep the cost as manageable as we can. If you want to go through a wholesale change out of the electrical system and the lighting standards, that would be a much bigger undertaking. So, I just think we've, in certain cases, we have used shielding. I will tell you, in some cases, that hasn't even sufficed, at least in the opinion of those who are most impacted. So, we just continue to work with them. It's slowed, as I said, it hasn't stopped. But again, you know, we're trying to work with certain areas where they have concerns.
Okay. So, we're not doing certain areas at one time, we're doing as a attrition, is kind of the...
That's how we had started out, unless we had new construction. So, in some cases, where there's new construction, or there's additional lights being implemented, or every time we put a new light in, it always has a LED bulb in it. But you'll see, over time, people will see the difference from where they drive from one place to another. But in neighborhoods especially, that's where the biggest issue is, and the biggest impact. And we'll be fine. It's just a matter of, it slows a little bit, and we'll work with the folks. I have a meeting with one of the homeowners associations next week to talk about it so we can go through. In some cases, the lamps are so old, we don't, we can't even buy the replacement lights for them anymore. So, we just kind of work through a testing process, if you will.
So, the homeowners association that you're going to be talking to, this is one where you're going to replace them, or they've already been replaced?
We've replaced some, and there has been some concern. So, we stopped replacing them at that point, and decided to sit down and talk through it a little bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just hope that, you know, we can move this along quicker.
But let us know. If you're going into a historical neighborhood or historic district, don't change them and let us get blindsided by it.
No, no.
So, just let us know.
No, yeah, absolutely.
Just let us know.
So, and everybody's been really good, Mr. Mayor, about working with GWP on it, and so, and as I said, I think one of the reasons you don't hear as much about it is because we don't force it on them.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. And my second question, I guess, is for Ms. Beers. The Greener Glendale Plan, I've asked about that a couple of times, and can you give us like a progress report, where we are on the updating?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Devine. I think the last time I gave you an update, we were in the process of having the RFQ out. GWP put an RFQ out for a consultant to come in and help us establish a sustainability function within the city of Glendale, a sustainability office, if you will. And that's actually part of the budget also this evening, in terms of establishing a sustainability officer for the city of Glendale. So, the RFQs are in. The staff has had the opportunity to review the RFQs. We will be before the council, I'm hoping, in the next three to four weeks at the most, to award the contract to one of the consultants, and move forward with the consultant in establishing all of the areas that are necessary in terms of sustainability, which will most definitely include the Greener Glendale Plan and an update to that, as well as an office that will be established, and a staff person who will ultimately be hired to have oversight of all things sustainability for the city of Glendale. So, it's moving not as quickly as we all would hope, but it will be before you, hopefully, within, at the most, within the next month.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And finally, and this has to do with the businesses involved in the name change on Artsoc. And as I understand it, this is regarding the business grants that we had allocated, $131,000. We had allocated to, for businesses that had to change their business cards and stationery, and whatever cost it involved, the change of that street name. Now, as I understand it, we have allocated $8,500 of that so far. So, we have $131,000, no, that's wrong. We have 100, how much do we have left, Phil? Through the 103?
123 or something.
Twenty, yes, something like that. A little over $100,000. So, I've had a request from one of the businesses who has, it's cost him a lot more than the $1,000 grant. And so, I'm just wondering if any of my colleagues would like to revisit those grants to enable the larger businesses that are on that street that are being inundated with costs more than $1,000 to perhaps receive more. And so, I just, if I can get a second from one of my colleagues to revisit that, and if not...
I just want to ask for something. I don't remember if we said we will allocate only $1,000 to businesses. This was, we said we, so they're going to turn in what will cost them to replace the light or the sign, and then, they didn't say 1,000?
The city council gave us direction at the time to reimburse up to $1,000 per business that provided us with appropriate receipts, et cetera, and documentation that we were able to see for us to then be able to reimburse. The $1,000 was set by city council.
Okay. Then, we allocated approximately 130,000, right?
That's correct.
So, then there is 130 businesses on that portion between Harvard to Wilson? 130 businesses?
That is correct, Mr. Agajanian. And if you look at Phoenix Salon, I think Phoenix Salon had something like 60 businesses, because each suite is its own business. So, there were several in that one location.
And since this went into effect, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and I know we can't get into too much detail, because the city attorney will stop me, and it went into effect June of 2018, nine companies have applied for the Business Impact Grant, and totaling $8,500. And that's what Ms. Devine was referring to, leaving a balance of 122,500.
I would join.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. So, the concerns about the crippling effect that the renaming of the street was going to have, the cataclysm that it was going to cause to the businesses on Artsoc Street was slightly exaggerated, I assume? 9,000 out of how many? How much?
130.
Oh, okay. All right. So, less than 10% of the money has been spoken for.
So, my question is, for those that were hit harder than others, would council like to revisit the grants to help out those that have a bigger cost because of the change?
Or impacted more?
Correct.
So, I can join them?
I think it's a reasonable request, to the extent they can show a need for it. But my point was that, at the time, I remember, some were arguing that this was going to be the end of the world, that it was a very bad idea, that it was going to hurt these businesses financially in such a bad way, because the renaming and all that was going to cost so much money. And we were compelled to actually allocate this money to make sure that they were not so hurt. And it turns out that, I mean, this was not, that wasn't the case. But so, I'm just pointing that out for future instances.
So, was, were you supporting that, Mr. Agajanian?
What we don't do, if the money is not...
Oh, that was?
It was, yeah. It was definitely, I was saying, if it was, if someone can show reasonably that they've been impacted negatively, you know, in a manner, in an amount that's more than the $1,000, I think it's reasonable for us to look at it. All I'm saying is that I'm just looking at the absolute numbers, and something's not right.
Yeah. So, just so we're clear...
We can, go ahead.
Just so we're clear, what we're bringing back, this is not business interruption coverage. This is cost of changing business cards, or stationery, or printed materials.
Address change.
And so...
Which will also, at this point, include, it would have to include the nine businesses that have already submitted, and if they had expenses more than $1,000. We'll include all of that in a report that we bring back to the city council, to be inclusive of everything, and we will provide that as quickly as we possibly can.
Since we didn't exhaust it all the money, apparently, some, they don't need it, so we can allocate that money to others.
That'll be the discussion.
We'll bring the report back.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Add one quick thing. I think this is the, this is what I was mentioning this afternoon. We vote on items, we move forward, and it comes back again. And then, two months later, it comes back with another format, two months, not only on this, on this issue. I think we made a decision, we just move forward, actually, just keep going. If this is the case, what if the rest of the 130 businesses, that they didn't submit any proposal or request yet, they come back and request it, and we go ahead and allocate more funding to other businesses? And then, rest of the 130 will come back and ask for it, and will we be going to allocate more money?
I think we stay at the 131, but as long as they have invoices, I think it's only fair that we, they are reimbursed.
Invoices for what?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I think we've gotten the direction...
We'll save this. I know there's a lot that we want to talk about, and in fact, I want to say a lot about this, but we'll wait until the item comes back.
I don't have a problem looking at this, you know, if there are more and more invoices.
Save your ammo.
But we vote on an issue, we move forward, then a month later, it comes back.
I understand.
That's all I'm saying.
Anything else, Ms. Devine?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you have something in addition?
Yes. I want to bring back the circle drive issue. Remember the second, no, no, just kidding, just kidding. Look at the city manager. No, no, I won't do that to you. No, no. It's okay. It's okay. Just, just...
You're the only one laughing.
Hey, you know, nobody laughs at my jokes, so I have to laugh at my jokes. No. I just wanted to let the public know, I missed a few events this week, because I went to back-to-back conventions and seminars. And I'm going to bring a quick report back when we come back in two weeks. So, if I missed some of the events, I apologize, but I was out of town attending some of the city, city, city conventions that we had to attend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, that's required, isn't it, under AB 1234?
Make a brief report at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Garpetian.
There you go. Thank you for taking on that task.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have a few items. Let's start with Monday, May 27th, Memorial Day, perhaps the most solemn of all national holidays. There are several celebrations and commemorations, actually, going on in the city. The highlighted event is going to be held at 9:30 a.m., Monday, of course, right here on the Isabel Street Plaza between City Hall and the Police Building. I encourage all residents of Glendale to attend. It's a very heartwarming and thoughtful ceremony, and it really pays our tribute to our men and women in uniform who gave the ultimate sacrifice for their country. So, please try to attend at 9:30. If you're an early bird, there is an earlier ceremony at the Montrose Vietnam Memorial, which starts at 7:30 a.m. Do we have a graphic for that, Mr.?
Fortunately, we don't.
We don't. But that starts at 7:30 a.m. at the corner of Ocean View and Honolulu, also very touching, slightly different than the Glendale City Ceremony. So, I encourage everyone to attend those two events. I could not attend any of the conferences that Mr. Garpetian will be referring to, perhaps next meeting, or any of the One Glendale Soccer Games. I was lucky enough to have two of my sons graduate, one from law school at UCLA on Friday. And immediately after the graduation ceremony, I jumped in an airplane and flew to Cincinnati, Ohio, the red eye, and I saw my younger son, Christopher, graduate from Xavier. So, I'm very proud of them, and many of you in the Glendale family remember them as being a little, two little snot-nosed kids. They're a little bigger, they cause their own different problems as they get older. Those of you who are parents will know what I'm talking about, but my congratulations to them. I also would like to give my very, very heartfelt thanks to State Senator Anthony Portantino, who, in his role as chairman of the Appropriations Committee, shelved SB 50. SB 50 was the housing bill authored by Senator Weiner of San Francisco, which would have imposed on all cities, most of the cities in the large counties of the state, an obligation to approve large, dense housing developments near transit lines and transit stations. It would have also obliterated the single-family residence zoning, and would have permitted a single-family home to be razed and a fourplex put in its place. California does have a housing crisis, but this Senate bill was going about it the wrong way, and would have imposed on every city, including Glendale, despite our strong efforts at creating housing. And everyone knows that. I mean, that's what we hear, some of the residents think we've created too much housing. But it would have imposed on us an additional burden. So, truly heartfelt thanks to Senator Portantino for nixing this bill. I think he went against some of his leadership of his own party, but he was really looking out for us when he took this step. So, thank you to Senator Portantino. The last item is some good news, some more good news, and that is, this coming Thursday, it's going to be very likely that the Metro Board will be allocating and appropriating about a quarter of a million dollars for our new Siklavia event, which is scheduled to be done in the year 2020, next year. Siklavia, as you recall, is an event where the roadways are closed to vehicular traffic and bicyc... and bicycles and other motorized devices.
Scooters.
I'm not sure where scooters fit in. I'm going to leave that to our chief to do the enforcement angle on that. Bicycles and skateboards, skateboarders and walkers and pedestrians, et cetera, will be able to use the streets. I don't think the exact route is determined, but it's going to be another fun event. I think all of us were there the last time we had it. Were you there four years ago, three years ago?
Yes.
So, it was a fun event, and we can open up our streets to the community sometime next year. And that's all I have. Any staff comments? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Item six is community event announcements, which will be restricted to three minutes, as well as three-minute general public comments for anyone wishing to forego the five minutes at the conclusion of the city business and speak now.
Thank you. First speaker is Oscar Rodriguez, out of uniform, but still...
Mayor Najarian, honorable members of council, distinguished city staff. Thank you very much for a few minutes to speak to you. I'm here, as you know, I'm a proud Glendale police officer, but I'm also a very proud Rotaryian. So, here I'm representing the Rotary Club of Glendale, the Noon Club. We have our upcoming car show, June second. This is a, this is a great event that we've had in the past. We're going to have it again at Verdugo Park. We're going to have, we're partnering with the Verdugo Woodlands Dads Club. They're going to provide food and beverages. Oh, by the way, this is my lovely daughter, Lisa, who decided to join me, thank you. She works over at Public Works. So, I want to invite you all to come on out. I know I've seen a council member, Garpetian, brings his cars out for us every year. I appreciate that very much. But this is going to be a fun-filled event for family, and everybody can come out. It's absolutely free to the public. We bring hundreds of great cars to this event, the beautiful setting at Verdugo Park. It's just a really good event. All the proceeds from this car show go to the Glendale Police Department Youth Programs, our Teens and Police Partnership for At-Risk Kids. We also fund our Teen Academy for the summertime. We bring kids into our police department, we show them the inner workings of a world-class police department, which is a great program. And then, we also benefit the Glendale Unified School District, Glendale Healthy Kids. It's a program directly benefits kids that are suffering from housing instability, food instability. And these, this is what, this is the reason the Glendale Rotary Club put this program together, to benefit our community and our youth in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
It's a great event.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Roberta Medford.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council, city staff, and viewers. I am Roberta Medford, a Montrose resident. I want to report tonight on two important new signs of the seriousness of the Earth's climate crisis. During the last, the recent weekend in May, these two events. One, increased Arctic warming. Temperatures of eighty-four and eighty-seven degrees Fahrenheit were recorded in the Arctic area of Russia, which is over thirty degrees higher than average normals. The great fear now is of a climate tipping point, a point of no return. If increased warming melts the Arctic permafrost, which will release its methane, which, as you know, is a greenhouse gas causing climate warming into the atmosphere. The second event during that weekend, May twelfth, it was reported, more carbon dioxide in the environment, in the atmosphere. Carbon, like methane, is a contributor to climate warming. And the Earth's atmosphere reached a part of four hundred and fifteen parts per million of carbon in the atmosphere. This is the highest level in at least eight hundred thousand years, and it probably is the highest in over three million years. Worse, the speed of the increase in carbon in the atmosphere is accelerating. As you, of course, know, greenhouse gases come from burning fossil fuels, such as natural gas. Will burning no additional natural gas in Glendale's Grayson Plant alone stop a climate catastrophe? No, unfortunately. But cutting future carbon emissions in Glendale will help avoid the climate tipping point that I mentioned. In this small step, Glendale will be part of the solution, not a contributor to the climate crisis. Please do not disregard the huge public support in evidence right now in Glendale for sustainability. Instead, use it as support for you to do the right thing. Business as usual is not acceptable. I urge you to order a plan to power our city without any new investments in gas that will lock future generations into fossil fuel. No one should want Glendale's legacy to be having added the last new gas-power generating capacity in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Angela Lasaka.
Hi, city council members and Mayor Najarian. I am Angela Lasaka. I am, I study music and environmental science at Glendale Community College. We founded Glendale Students for Sustainability, that's our club in the college. And we support the concerns addressed by Glendale Environmental Coalition. I want to state my concern regarding the plans of G W P. As we all know, fossil fuel collisions inflict magnitude of serious health and developmental impacts in children. That is true, like, emissions from toxic particles, gases, and CO2. In one of the monthly journal articles of environmental health perspectives, they state that exposure to air pollution is associated with low or reduced birth weight, small size for gestational age, and preterm or premature birth. These are low-risk factors for an array of neurodevelopmental disorders in children. Although the risk increase in air pollution are generally modest, the population exposed is very large. That is only one manifestation of what we call, what the youth now calls a climate breakdown. If we fully account the health productivity and environmental costs of these fuel-producing companies and hold them accountable, they would invest in more renewables, probably. According to Maria Prentis, a physicist at Harvard, things may not be done cheaply, but going to hundred percent renewables with the technology we already have now is possible and feasible. Of course, renewables like solar has its negatives. If we trace it back to its production, it utilizes non-renewables in making it as well. But it significantly reduces emissions, which is more efficient than what we have now in G W P and the plant. So, if we, we will eventually switch to renewables to, like, comply with state regulations. So, this plant that G W P has is an unintelligent investment and a waste of money. So, like LA, for instance, has been tackling this matter already. So, I show the city of Glendale, thank you for listening.
Frank Gallo.
Frank Gallo, representing the Glendale Coalition for Better Government. I am speaking in reference to your latest city budget session and the proposed use of measures funds, the recently approved sales tax increase. Well done is better than well said. And you have proved it with your decision to use most of measures funds for one of the most important issues that Glendale faces, low-income housing. Many citizens were concerned that you would have given into appropriating the funding for salaries and pensions, like it has occurred in the past with surplus funds, but you kept your priorities straight. Though, staff compensation is important, you decided to do what is best for the citizens and the overall health of the city. Furthermore, you kept your promises. Your decision speaks well about your commitment to the citizens of Glendale. We truly hope that you intend to keep that commitment and that low-income housing funding is kept in place until the Glendale housing problem has been solved. The Glendale Coalition for Better Government thanks you for making the citizens' needs a priority in the budget process. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lucine Kazarian. So, Mr. Clark, we double the time for a translation.
I do apologize, I would like to move out. I've lived in the same place for twenty years. It used to be good, the managers used to be American people. Now, our building is managed by young people. And my, the parking is located right in front of my apartment. I cannot live there anymore. I have all the papers that I'm able to move out. I paid five hundred dollars to my landlord so they can change my carpet and put laminate flooring. Is that allowed, is the law that way? Please help me, as soon as I paid five hundred dollars to replace my laminate flooring, my rent went up to one thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. I would like to talk about a lot of things, but the only thing I want right now for you to find me a place to live, and I'll be very thankful. Mr. Grish, I've ordered for you two times. My kids, you're Armenians, please help me as much as you can.
So... So, Vlad, if you could please tell the lady that although we're not in the business of relocation of tenants, that we can maybe get some help from... Where can we get some help from? I mean, what department would this go into?
It doesn't seem as though it would fall under any one of our departments based on what the resident has brought forward, but we would be more than happy to speak with her to see if there's any issues where we can be of assistance. It would be either within the city attorney's office or community development, and we'll follow up with...
The issue of paying, paying to have her flooring changed and then getting hit with a rent increase may, may fall under...
City Attorney's Office.
I, I, I'm sorry, I think she's Section Eight. She's a recipient of Section Eight. She just wants to be relocated to another unit. So, that should be under our housing.
If it's a Section Eight, we, we will, we will follow up. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we will follow up, either way.
Okay, thank you. I have no other cards, and this portion of our communications is closed. Let's go on to the next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is that, items under action. Eight A is Chief of Police Regarding Report Regarding Use of Forced Legislation. Eighty-one is Resolution in Support of Senate Bill Two Thirty. Two is Resolution to Oppose Assembly Bill Three Ninety-Two.
Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to give you a little bit of an update on use of force legislation that is making its way through Sacramento. It was a topic of discussion in the last legislative season, it has come back this year. And for those of us in the police service and in the community, this is a critical topic. And as I would say, it's really important that we get this one right. There are currently two bills working its way through the legislature. One is Senate Bill Two Thirty, and the other is Assembly Bill Three Ninety-Two. Senate Bill Two Thirty was introduced by Senator Caviaro out of the Salinas area, and it was a comprehensive update. It was designed to do basically three things. It was to update the use-of-force standards in California law, which are very, very antiquated in the statutory law, to meet the current U.S. constitutional standards of Graham versus Connor and Tennessee versus Garner. It also established issue or basic policy standards that every police department would have to have a policy and meet certain minimum standards, and it also established basic training requirements for all departments to meet. It has subsequently been amended as it's gone through the process, and the part about updating the section that deals with a police officer's use of deadly force has been removed, and that was tethered to Assembly Bill Three Ninety-Two. Assembly Bill Three Ninety-Two solely dealt with changing the standard for the use of force by police officers. It does not, did not put, and does not put any money into training, nor does it provide any policy guidance in that process. And probably the most critical part is it changes the use-of-force standard from what we now call reasonable to that of being necessary. And in here, I'm going to say that words matter. I will tell you, probably from a field perspective and officers, training is going to be much more important than the words, but the words here are important. Officers are asked to make decisions in split seconds under evolving, very stressful, and sometimes extremely dangerous circumstances. The challenge with changing this standard is that what it does is it creates a very murky standard from one that we all understand and is uniform across the United States to one that is going to be murky and done in hindsight. And so, the difference between an officer determining what is reasonable action under the circumstances that they face to one that is necessary, and then, if you will, being second-guessed as to whether you have two courses of action and you chose one, why you didn't choose the other. And, you know, that, that has some impacts for all police departments, and that includes Glendale. And I would say that I think Glendale is one of the finest police departments in the United States. We invest a lot in our police officers, and in order to do what we do with the resources that we have, our officers are very proactive. We get out, we work with the community, we value those partnerships, and we engage with members of the community. And that means that we come across criminal suspects on a, on a, on a regular basis. But, but changing this standard then puts the officers in the position of having to second-guess these critical decisions, and then, that then puts members of our community at risk because they're worried about the second-guessing of a reasonable decision as to what's going to happen after that. I will tell you, things have changed a little bit, you know, as I've noticed some different things. Glendale, as I said, I'm very proud of it. We will have some seventy-nine thousand contacts a year, seventy-nine thousand people that we use. We use force less than one percent of the time. In fact, it tends to range between point one and point two percent of the time is when we find it necessary to use some level of force. So, we have that as a very, very, very low rate. I will also tell you that we are, we are starting to find that we are removing weapons from the field in a much more frequent, in a much more frequent basis. Back in two thousand and ten, we seized one hundred and thirty-one guns as evidence based on our contact... Back in 2010, we seized 131 guns as evidence based on our contacts. In 2018, our officers retrieved 205 guns. That is not all the guns we took into place, but that just to give you a sampling of the issues that we find out there. I will tell you that, look, use of force is important to the law enforcement profession. It is important to the community. As I said, it is important that we get it right. Statewide, actually, use of force has gone down this last year, and training is one of the key things that we're going to need to do that. The law enforcement community did come together and has supported SB 230 because we are committed to that continual improvement. However, when we look at AB 392, the challenge of that change in that standard has potentially extremely detrimental effects to our ability to provide law enforcement and community safety. I guess that's a long way of saying that I'm really requesting that you, as a body of respect, you're requesting that you would support SB 230 and oppose AB 392 as it's currently drafted. The only other thing I will add is I've sort of picked up some legislative updates this year. I was sort of hopeful that maybe I would be able to pull this item, that negotiations on the process would have reached a conclusion. Unfortunately, that has not been the case, and as of an update late this afternoon, the author of AB 392 has not been willing to negotiate with the representatives of California police chiefs and the other significant law enforcement organizations. The significant law enforcement organizations are standing behind SB 230 and opposing AB 392, and the League of California Cities is also opposing AB 392. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any cards on this item?
I'll move. Page... Second?
So you're asking...
Page 1 and 2.
So the resolutions to support Senate Bill 230 and to oppose...
392.
392. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mirenajarian?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Next item, please.
He is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding purchase order agreement for general water quality testing supplies, equipment, and equipment maintenance with Hatch Company. Wanted is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the purchasing administrator to execute a three-year purchase order agreement in the not-exceed amount of $225,000.
Ms. Spears?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We'll go directly to Mr. Zern, general manager of GWP. How was it going to come out right? Glendale.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're seeking approval of a three-year purchase agreement with Hock Company for the supplies, maintenance, and parts for all of our water quality testing equipment. All of our equipment is Hock equipment. We standardized several years ago. It's time for us to enter into a new agreement, and Hock is the only company that provides that, and we want to maintain continuity and consistency, especially when we are dealing with water quality. The three-year agreement, as read by the clerk, is $225,000, $75,000 per year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on the purchase of the Hock water quality testing machinery?
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mirenajarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is a hearing. 9A is interim director of finance regarding public hearing on fiscal year 2019-2020, proposed citywide budget and fee schedule for the city of Glendale.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and go to the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we are before you with the public hearing piece of our 1920 budget for the fiscal year, which will include the summary of all funds, the proposed citywide fee changes. We'll be able to answer any questions that you or the public may have. As you know, we have been through an exhaustive study session process with the City Council that started on April 30th with our first budget study session that commenced at 9:00 a.m., and we talked about our third quarter update for 1819. We talked about the 1920 proposed general fund budget and our five-year forecast. And we also touched on some items that we touch on on annual basis, which is the organizational profile. On May 7th, our second budget study session, we had departmental presentations. Each department had a presentation in terms of what their budget looks like for the coming year, our capital improvement program, any proposed citywide fee changes, which includes deletions as well, as well as additions in CPI. On the 14th of May, budget study session number three, which was quite extensive, which started at 9:00 a.m., that entailed follow-up items, which was on one of the fees, where there was a question on one of the fees, and a very robust conversation regarding Measure S and the discussion that ensued, and we will have a slide or two on that this evening in terms of the direction that council gave us on the 14th. This evening, as we sit here, is our budget hearing, and on June 4th is the budget adoption. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I will ask Ms. Flynn, interim finance director, to take us through the proposed budget and the summary of all funds by type, and we will take you through each of those sections and answer any questions that you may have. Ms. Flynn? Thank you, Ms. Spears. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's our pleasure to present to you in our budget hearing the final budget as we are moving into adoption in the next couple of weeks. On Slide 5, you'll see the summary of appropriations for all our funds, and this basically is a snapshot of our entire city's budget for this upcoming fiscal year. The first part under governmental funds is our largest fund, the general fund, and you'll see that we have our Measure S funding out of the general fund broken out. That $6.3 million for the Measure S funding in the general fund includes the rental subsidy program, the first-time homebuyer program, rental rights program, aquatics program expansion, as well as the ice rink. The remainder of that you'll see in the CIP funds, capital improvement funds, a little lower. The next group of funds is our special revenue funds, a total of $109 million there, and that is most of our grant sources of different funds that we have there. Debt service, that's the certificates of participation to pay the debt service on the police building. In our capital improvements program, we have the capital improvement fund. This is the majority of our general fund, CIP, as well as our state gas tax, and that represents that $16.3 million. And then the Measure S capital improvement is $23.5, and that encompasses the affordable housing development as well as the infrastructure approval of $3.5 million. So the total capital improvement funds is $39.89 million. Under our proprietary funds, we have our enterprise funds, the largest being in our GWP operations for electric and water. Sewer is also in there, as well as refuse, total of $430 million. And then lastly is our internal service funds at $111.8 million. So grand total, all funds for the city for this upcoming fiscal year, we have a budget proposed of $938,337,000. Moving on to Slide 6, you've seen this all in budget study session number 2. It's our summary of appropriations for the general fund by department, and what I can tell you here is the majority of the departments all had salary and benefit increases, and some also had offsets with eliminations of vacant positions. So within the general fund, we eliminated 11 vacant positions, and you'll see that in a slide soon. And then they also, some of the departments also had some maintenance and operation reductions in their contractual services budget and other areas. And some of the larger increases you'll see here in community services and parks, as you recall, that is the movement of the recreation fund coming out of the special revenue fund and into the general fund under CSP. And then in fire, about half of that represents the Fire Academy. Moving on to Slide 7, the second part of this, we have the filming funds collapsing into the management services department from special revenue, so that represents the majority of that $1.3 million increase. And then under police, the increases there are represented by salary and benefit increases as well as utilities. So the total increase in the general fund is a little over $9 million, so total budget The Measure S funding is down below, so grand total for general fund is $243,316,000. Moving on to Slide 8, this represents the reductions I mentioned, and you'll see that there's a total of about 11 positions eliminated in the general fund across eight different departments, and as I mentioned, also contractual services, and then some other decreases in hourly wages and maintenance and operation categories for a total of $3.5 million that was reduced. $1.9 million of that was in salaries and benefits, and $1.6 of it was in maintenance and operations. The proposed service level adjustments on Slide 10, these were added into the budget for the upcoming fiscal year in the general fund. Again, the largest there being the Fire Academy for 15 recruits of about $1.4 million. So total there was $1.6 million that was added into the budget. On Slide 11, we recap the general fund resources and appropriations for the upcoming year with our revenues at $236 million. We have a use of assigned economic development fund balance of $628,000 for total resources of $236.6 million. Total appropriations, not including the Measure S funding, brings us down to a use-of-fund balance of about $319 million. I'm sorry, $319,000, not million. That was a slip. Slide 12 gives you an idea of what we are projecting our year-end fund balance to be at the end of next June. If we look at what our projected beginning fund balance is of $75.3 million, put in the use-of-fund balance of $319,000, our projected fund balance at year-end will be just over $75 million, or 31.7%, which is still within your target, which, your target is a floor of 25%. So you're right on track there. Moving on to Slide 13, this is the breakdown of the Measure S approved funding that Ms. Spears mentioned that we discussed last week at study session number 3. Under the housing category, we have the affordable housing development at $20 million. The rental rights program is $410,000. Monthly housing rental subsidy program is a little over $4 million, and the first-time homebuyer is at $750,000 for a total for the housing section of $25.3 million. Under infrastructure, we have the seismic upgrades primarily for the fire stations of $3.5 million. Aquatics program expansion in our recreation section of $460,000. And the holiday area, we have the ice rink for $458,000 for total appropriations of Measure S funding of $29,848,000. Summary appropriations in our special revenue funds. These basically are grant-funded. Some of the larger ones, we have our Section 8 Housing Assistance Fund, Fund 2020. That has a budget of $39 million this coming year. In our home grant fund, we also have a budget of $2.2 million. Many of these funds are driven by the revenue sources we get, so there is fluctuations from year to year that you'll see in this. Down below, in our Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, we have a budget of $6.7 million. Moving on to Slide 15, our Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund has a little bit of a decrease, and that, if you recall, represents the 20% transfer that we do from the general fund. So the amount that we're receiving back from the loan repayment this year, this coming year, is a little bit lower, so that transfer is still 20% on just a lower amount, so that represents that change. You'll see the filming and recreation funds closing out of the special revenue category. Those moved up to the general fund. And then the parking fund, we have a $13.7 million budget. Most of that's represented by the contract that we have for parking enforcement, as well as some capital improvement program planned projects that we have. Measure W, that's a new fund that we have budgeted this year, is budgeted at $1.2 million. Slide 16. Some of the projects there, we don't have any budget, any proposed appropriations in our two Measure R funds. They are utilizing probably, or continuing, the projects that they have in process. Transit utility fund has a $10.8 million budget there. And then the special events fund at the bottom, that's another one that moved up into the general fund category. So all in all, our total special revenue funds is a total of $109,005,000 for this upcoming fiscal year. Debt service, as I mentioned, just includes the one payment for our police building, a little over $3 million. And then in our capital improvement program, on Slide 19, the first slide here represents the general fund portion of the capital improvement program, and that has a budget this coming year of $7.6 million. We have got station upgrades, under the fire station upgrades in the fire category, and we've got some parking lot resurfacing for some of our parks, as well as a splash pad at the pool. So that's the $1.5 million in the community services and parks area. Moving on to Slide 20, this is the breakdown again for the Measure S capital improvement program. That represents the $23.5 million that council has approved there. And lastly, on Slide 21, we have our state gas tax, parks mitigation fee fund, and housing mitigation fee fund for a total capital improvement program of $39,880,000. Lastly is our enterprise funds. I'm sorry, not lastly, we still have internal service. And you'll see here, we've got our sewer fund, refuse, Verdugo Communications, electric. Again, many of the changes in the proposed fiscal year 1920 compared to this past year represents either changes in capital improvements or just a different programming for different projects that they have. In the electric fund, they do have an increase there primarily for purchase of power, and you'll see we have a new fiber optic fund as well. And total for enterprise funds is $430,676,000. Our last category of funds is internal service funds. This houses most of our internal charges that we charge back to user departments. So we have fleet, the fleet fund is in here, our information services, infrastructure, as well as applications and wireless funds are in here, all of our medical costs, our workers' compensation, and these are a function of the rates in order to keep the funds in balance. So you'll see our proposed budget for internal service funds on Slide 25, $111,842,000. Slide 26, again, this is a snapshot of our authorized full-time positions for the last several years. For fiscal year 2019-20, our proposed authorized positions are 1,585 full-time. This does include the five unclassified positions for the Measure S funding for the rental housing subsidy program, as well as the one for the aquatics program. Onto fees. Excuse me. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, is the, yes, the Director of Sustainability, is that position on here?
The count?
Included?
Yes. I don't believe so. No. The sustainability? No, that's not in there yet. No.
So what you will see in the report is the title that we would like to add for the sustainability officer to the class and comp resolution piece, so it's the establishment of the position. And as we understand more about what that position ought to look like, it will also give us some time based on looking, continuing to look at our vacancies within the organization to see if we can utilize one of our vacancies for that classification. If we're unable to do so, we'll be before the council to ask for the position to be added to the position count.
Okay. On Slide 28 is a recap of our proposed fee changes. We had a total of 2,347 fees citywide, no changes to a vast majority of them. There are 35 fee deletions, decreases to existing fees, there are 30 of those. There's 39 increases to existing fees and three modifications. 759 of our fees qualified for our CPI adjustment, and then there were 12 new fees that were discussed during budget study session number 2. Our estimated revenue... Our estimated revenue by fee category is 646,213, and you can see the majority of that being in the increase, the CPI increases, as well as the new fees that are being proposed. And then this is the breakdown on Slide 30 between general fund and non-general fund, so of the 646,000 proposed or estimated revenue, 513,000 of that is general fund revenue and 132, almost 133,000 in non-general fund. And that brings us back to our calendar with one last meeting coming up in two weeks for budget adoption. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Are there any cards on this item? Okay, this is the result of many hours of staff time, hundreds if not thousands of hours of staff time, as well as council review. We're about 12 hours in, open session. Not to mention the time that we spent getting briefed on this. This is the public hearing in which anyone can make a comment. If there are no, Mr. Garbich?
Quick question, can you explain Measure W, which is a new one?
Yes.
Measure W Fund is Slide 15.
Sure.
1.2 million? Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Laura Petian will have Mr. Imrani give you a brief on Measure W.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Measure W is a new stormwater tax that was passed by voters in LA County in November, and it's a fee that's assessed for every residence to be collected and spent on improvement to the stormwater system throughout LA County. And each city basically gets an allotment based on the impervious layer that exists within the city, a certain amount to be spent. Approximately 50 percent of the revenues from Measure W are going to go towards projects within the city, and then most of the rest is going to be spent on regional projects. So to encourage collaboration between different cities to come up with regional projects.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Before, I want to make you comment.
Do we need a vote on this? Vote and file? Are you sure?
I'm concerned, still concerned. I've been here three years and I'm still concerned about transferring 20 million. I think this year, we are transferring 20 million, 277,000 dollars from Glendale Water and Power to General Fund. And as you all know, we have been sued by coalition of better government and other IBEW. And we went to courts, Superior Court, and we lost the case of 94 million dollars, right?
Which was reversed on appeal, yes, sir?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, the figure is right, 94 million. And then we went to Court of Appeal.
That was, that was, that was the judgment that was reversed on appeal, yes.
Yeah, and we went to the Court of Appeal and that reversed, and they went through it, and apparently will be less than this amount, less than 94 million dollars, but still, we have problem with this transfer of money. Eventually we have, it will be some figure, I don't know what the figure is going to be, but will be some figure, it's not going to be zero. But we are still transferring without any hesitation and we are, however, whatever amount is, we have to return it. And why we don't try to reduce that amount? Of course, percentage-wise, they may say the budget three years ago was 212 million dollars, now it's 236 million dollars, the general budget, and we used to transfer 20 million dollars, and now we are transferring 20 million dollars. Percentage-wise, we are transferring less money. But however, in my opinion, we have to reduce that 20 million dollars to something much less than 20 million dollars at least, so this way we are not going to owe money. Basically, we have, we consider a budget and we spend exactly the same amount. I didn't see recent years that we have saved. One year, we came back and said, okay, we have spent 15 million or 30 million dollars less than we have allocated the money. So I want to raise my concern. We have to do changes in the way we are operating and thinking, and that 20 million dollars, I was hoping that will be reduced to something like 10 million dollars, or maybe less. So if we are going to lose on, of course, Court of Appeal, send it back to, I guess, Superior Court again. So if we are going to lose, so at least we are not going to come back and say, now we don't have the money. That's what I want to raise my concern, of course. Thank you.
Well, my response is that here's our budget, all the departments, if you would like us to take 10 million dollars less of transfer, show us which departments you'd like to cut the 10 million from, because we still have to balance the budget. So you're saying, don't take 20, don't transfer 20, transfer 10. Only transfer 10, we're 10 million dollars out of whack. I will entertain any suggestions you have as to where to cut that from, that's the question.
That's what our staff should do. That's not my job to do it. I do in my studio. I know what my income is, and I will spend appropriately. I'm not going to say, okay, I will spend it, I will transfer the money, I raise the electric or other fees or other numbers. So eventually, we, here we have problems. They sued us, they won. We went to Court of Appeals, they said some calculation that lower court did, he was wrong. But however, we end up with something. So consider four, five years, still going to be some millions of dollars. So we have to go slowly.
So staff will do what council directs them to do. If there's a desire of council to direct staff to go through the budget and reduce 10 million dollars, then let there be such a motion or a direction, and we can do that. Otherwise, it's not my desire, and I can't speak for anyone else, but it's not my desire to send staff out to cut the budget that we've worked on by 10 million dollars. Now, if there are others who would like to do that, then now is the time to speak. Otherwise, you're certainly on your own able and permitted to suggest where we can make cuts, even though that's not your job, I understand, you have a different profession, you're not a municipal financer, but a lot of these are basic concepts that you could suggest. Cut the parks, cut the library, cut the affordable housing, cut the streets, cut the special events, cut the police force, cut the fire department.
Cut 4 percent of?
I'm not willing to do that.
So then?
So you made a suggestion, I understand your suggestion.
I have to hire 1,500 staff to go through all this, and then I do the cut myself.
I don't understand.
I'm saying, you're saying, where do I cut?
We've got 1,585 employees.
Right. That's where?
You want to cut 4 percent of that? 4 percent of that is what, 60 people?
I'm saying, if you're asking me specifically where I'm going to cut, I need 1,580 members of the staff to go through on each item and then reduce it a little bit, so then I can answer. I cannot answer one person to look into work of 1,585 people who brought this to us and say where to cut it. But if it's not clear how to cut it, maybe we have to cut it 4 percent everywhere.
Probably the best time to raise this were during our budget workshops where we could have gotten into the details, but let's get right out there, is there anyone that supports?
This is three years that I'm raising the same issue, isn't it something new?
Well, you didn't raise it during our budget workshops.
I said it too.
Regardless, whether you said it or you didn't say it, you're making a, I'm going to take that as a, some sort of direction, is there support to go through the budget now between now and June 4th and cut 10 million dollars from the budget? If there is, say so now, otherwise we're going to move on to the next item. I don't hear anything, so, next item, please.
I just want to raise the issue.
Thank you, and you made your point.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is Oral Communications, five-minute portion, discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
First speaker is Glenn Webb. Glenn will be followed by Ash Rosas, or?
Mr. Webb, you can advance it with a clicker on the counter. Button in the top right will move the slides forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here to make a few comments on our, on our planning process that we began with a new interim IRP in December. Not much to be said here, the reason we are here, of course, is to try and sustain this planet so we and our grandchildren can live on it. We had a bunch of meetings, the focus groups, which I participated in too. One of the meetings that I was in, there were about 40 people in the room, we were asked to go to three corners of the room. One was a cost corner, one was a reliability corner, another was a clean energy corner. And 100 percent of our group went to the clean energy corner, and we spoke to each other and arrived at a consensus that these three items do not need to be traded off against each other, we can have them all. Is there a carbon approach, which we're going to get to at some point in the future, 2045 or whatever the year turns out to be, is going to prove to be the most reliable and most likely the least cost system? We just don't need to compromise on any of these three. The planning horizon that's being used right now, whatever the year is, 2027, 2030, 2038, is not really a plan at all. It leaves us having spent 5 to 800 million dollars, which is what the current cost estimates are. It leaves us with continuing air pollution, continuing greenhouse gas emissions, continuing negative health effects, and no plan to meet SB 100. We must plan for zero carbon now. And I'm going to say 2045 is acceptable, 2030 is better to get to zero carbon. This is a chart that is probably the most bizarre chart that GWP has put up in the last two years. It's been, it's been shown to the, to the focus groups, and it shows six, six scenarios that GWP has been working on. And unfortunately, the one at the top there, the one I have circled, 100 percent carbon-free portfolio is not feasible, and it's not feasible because that red bar there, which is the loss of load hours, in other words, the percentage of time that we'd be blacked out in this city, is 3,900 hours, almost 45 percent of the time in a year we would be blacked out if we implemented the scenario number one, which consists of 50 megawatts of new distributed energy resources, a 600-megawatt-hour battery, and all the resources except units one through eight. This chart is, number one, absurd, number two, mathematically impossible, just plain impossible. And I don't have the time to really explain exactly why that's true, but that black line that's drawn down there is the amount of time to the left, 45 percent of the year, we would be blacked out whenever our load goes above 130 megawatts, if you use the scenario and the calculations that were on the previous chart. And I'd be pleased to explain that to anyone, but I can't do that here because of the time We've talked a lot about transmission and integration, GWP's position, getting to 100 percent greenhouse gas-free energy does not appear to be possible without additional transmission capability, and yet, there's been no discussion whatsoever in any GWP presentation about getting new transmission. The only thing that's been said is it's difficult, or it's impossible, or we're talking to LEDWP, but nothing in the plan. How are we going to get to 2045 with no plan? We will have spent the money and will be 60 percent renewables by 2029, and then we throw up our hands. So the conclusion of Pace Energy and StanTech and GWP back in February presented to you was that an interconnection between GWP Kellogg and Eagle Rock could provide us 100 megawatts of capacity at 65 million dollar cost. That was their conclusion, the result of several million dollars of expenditure on their studies, and there are other options available, and yet we're not doing anything about them. We're not putting anything in the plan, we're not planning on new transmission, we're not allocating money out of the cost figures for new transmission, we're just burying our heads in the sand. The conclusion, my conclusion, additional transmission integration resources are needed, not just for Glendale but statewide, and we must begin now and work with the other stakeholders in the state to solve this problem. Planning for 2030, and especially for a fossil fuel power plant, is just not a reasonable option. My conclusion, we have a unique opportunity here in Glendale's history to make a real difference in our energy future. The health of our planet and the well-being of our Glendale residents are at stake. We're about to make a major investment, 500 to 800 million dollars according to GWP's latest cost charts. So this city council gets to decide what we do. We hope you choose a zero-carbon path, and my recommendation is that we, is that the city council immediately pass a resolution requiring Glendale Water and Power to prepare a plan, just to prepare a plan for zero carbon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ash Rosas.
Hello, City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Ash Rosas, and I am an 11th grader at high school. As I started last, as I stated last Tuesday at the city council meeting, I am extremely concerned about our climate crisis. Glendale Water and Power is proposing to invest millions of dollars in the repowering of the Grayson Power Plant. The repowering of Grayson would likely make Glendale the last city in California to approve, to approve a gas power plant. As a, as a Glendale resident, I want Glendale to be famous for its culture, parks, city beauty, and much more, not for a fossil fuel plant in 2019 when all the technology is available to go 100 percent clean, and, and when we know we are at a climate tipping point. You may not all be around, but I will hopefully be here at the end of the century dealing with a world of upheaval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last speaker is Tamara Movsesian, with interpreter. But I think she's asking.
Hello. On behalf of group of Glendale residents, I ask you to please reconsider your last week's decision about having three meetings a month and have meeting every week so residents can come and speak to you and address their concerns. so residents can come and speak to you and address their concerns. You made this, you didn't approve the exchange of the school district building. They were not bothering any residents, they were not evicting any residents, and they were not causing any problems. But the Glendale community officials are being allowed to demolish 62 family units to have more parking spaces. How come they're allowed to do this? On February 14, 2013, on Valentine's Day, Armine Hakopian called a special meeting and proclaimed herself as a board member and city approved her decision. So you're allowed to make that decision? So why people are fighting for parking lots? It's all about the money and everyone knows everything is about making more money. Does one person allow to play with families' luggage?
What's the issue?
62 families. Some of the landlords agreed to sell their buildings. One of my friends lives in one of these buildings and she has section eight. And right now, she's having a hard time to find an apartment without a subsection eight voucher. Now the college officials are suing the residents to evict them, but the land belongs to the city. Please do something about it. So there's a question, Mr. Aran Ajarn, does Armine Hakopian, did Armine Hakopian wait for you to become city council member so she can?
Just push.
And she has pressure on you right now? I don't have any profit for fighting for this. Valodja asked me if I have any profit. I told him, no. I never had profit in any of my decisions, for any of my decisions. So please, the land belongs to you. Please do something for the 62 families who are being evicted. We don't know, the judge might make a different decision, we never know. So three of you wanted to have three meetings a month. Are you tired of us? Those rails were not painted two weeks ago, they were black and now they've been painted. But our apartments are in really bad shape?
So usually we don't respond, thank you very much, even though we don't have meetings every Tuesday of the month. The Tuesdays that we don't have the meetings, I am in City Hall and I can meet and speak with you more than five minutes. And I can speak to all your friends that want to talk more than five minutes. So I can spend more time with you, Mrs. Movsesia. I think that's good. You just called Hurek, who speaks Armenian, and we're glad to set a meeting, not just with me, but with council members Sinanian or Garpetyan or Agadjanian or Devine. Second, the property that you're talking about is being eminent domain by Glendale Community College. Those are private pieces of property that the college says they need. Glendale City has nothing to do with it, nothing at all. It's Glendale College and the private landowners. And if they cannot agree on a price, then they go to the judge. The judge says what the appropriate price is. And as far as Armine Hakopian, waiting for me to get off college so she can run the show, I don't know. I don't know about that, I can't answer. I know, but we don't have to answer. Make an appointment, make an appointment for next Tuesday and we'll talk. I'll buy you a cup of coffee.
I'd like to move to adjourn in the memory of Saro Godakyan.
We are so adjourned in his memory. Thank you.